For either of the meetings. And I suppose that we don't have anyone scheduled to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and prayer, so.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, we do.
Oh, we do?
Yes, ma'am. Are you ready?
Yes, so we are ready to be led in the pledge of allegiance and the prayer.
Okay, the order of invocation, let us govern ourselves. Heavenly Father, as we gather for this special call meeting, we ask for your wisdom and guidance as we discuss the matters before us. Grant us clarity of thought and the ability to listen with open minds. Help us to make decisions that are just and beneficial for all members of our community. Unite our hearts and our minds in common purpose. And may our actions today reflect your grace and serve the shared goals of our city. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Madam Mayor, I do the roll call at this time.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Mays.
Here.
Councilmember Holcomb. Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Lockett.
Here.
Councilmember Frazier.
Here.
Councilmember Brunson.
Here.
Councilmember Denton.
Here.
Councilmember Fields.
Here, sir.
So six present, two absent.
Thank you. And we will, we only have one item as the call meeting allows. And the item that is on the agenda for this call meeting is an item that we sought to put on the agenda on Monday. And it is to waive competitive bidding for the current audit firm or accounting firm that is currently conducting the audit and has been for years. And we're having to do this so that we can sign the agreement so that they can continue with the auditing process and we can catch up. As you all can recall, will recall, Finance Director Gina Devers informed us that we were behind by two years. They have just about completed the 2022 audit. And what we need to do is sign the agreement so that we, hello? So that we can sign the agreement to conduct the audit for the 2023. And these are for our federal grants. This is specifically for federal grants, so this is not.
Madam Mayor, would you hold a second? Councilmember Fields and other councilmembers, would you please mute until you're ready to ask a question? We getting the feedback.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna mention that the agenda for the one o'clock meeting is for Waste Management contract, so we can only discuss that during the one o'clock meeting.
The agenda we have set for one o'clock, if we improperly sent out the agenda, is the resolution waiving competitive bid, bidding and authorizing an agreement with Ford.
Well, that's the solid waste. That's the first.
Okay, well.
You got one at one fifteen, one o'clock, one fifteen?
That's right. So the one at one o'clock is the solid waste. Madam Clerk?
The, the one for.
Yeah, there you go. One o'clock.
Both of them, so both of them are waiving competitive bidding. I just wanted to clarify with Madam Clerk because the intention was for the audit bid matter to be discussed at one o'clock, so Madam Clerk.
Oh, that's right.
Clarify.
Yes, the first one is for solid waste.
Okay, okay, so the intention was to, for the first one to be the, the audit. Believing that that would take less time. Well, let's move forward. We will discuss the one, the matter with the solid waste. And I believe that after the meeting on Monday, we had a lengthy discussion and engaged the the presentation from SWS and asked several questions. So I guess the first thing that I would ask is if any members had any questions or comments at this juncture.
I do. This is Lynette. Can y'all hear me?
Councilmember Frazier, please do. Go ahead.
I was not there. I was at a mandatory meeting that I had to be at. But I did go and read the, the information that you all sent for this meeting. And I have a few concerns. I don't have a concern about George Wheatley. I know him. He's always been there. Where I do have a concern is a couple of places. One, when we do bidding, usually it's a, like it's a sealed bid, so nobody knows what's in those bids until the bids are open. But in the contract, it was saying that you all were gonna have meetings with the people that are looking to set a bid for a proposal for this, this project, for this solid waste. And I'm a little concerned about that because we're not supposed to have, if, 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 my understanding is correct, which it might not be. But we shouldn't be having conversations with people in reference to RFP bids. Because then that's gonna put us in some kind of legal issue. Because bids are supposed to be sealed until the bid starts and then we're supposed to decide. But to go back and forth with companies in reference to the RFP and stuff like that, it, it, it kind of puts us in a gray area in my eyes. The second concern is.
Madam, madam, councilmember, madam councilmember. If we could, since you weren't here and I just, I wanted to address it one by one if you don't mind, so we don't lose anything. And so on that matter, it is not a sealed bid process. It is a, but however, it is an RFP process. And the role of SWS and Mr. Wheatley made this very clear would be something, basically as a procurement, the role that a procurement department or a procurement director would play. And the way that they conduct those, the meetings and the proposal process, the, the proposals and the cost amounts are still closed off to the public and closed off in the process. And, and I'll add that the, the process that was laid out to us and described to us is one that has been approved by city attorneys across this state and, and others that have utilized this process. Also, I would like you to know that on the selection committee, our local selection committee, City Attorney Althea Hayden Scott will serve on that selection committee. So that's my answer to that. Okay, and if you could, go ahead.
Oh, okay. And so, and so my other concern is, too, we said, when I look back on the city council meetings, because even though I'm not there, I try to go back and, and listen as much as I can, but I haven't gotten to the full thing. But part that I did hear is that when we do this, this, this resolution or ordinance, I don't know which one y'all heard that. I can't speak right now.
Resolution.
But when we do, when we do this resolution, that the people who ever win this process, well, since y'all say it's not bid, but it would be a bid if we don't, if we don't waive this competitive bidding. But if this, whether it's a bid or whether it's a RFP, we quote whatever. I mean, if they win this bid, whoever wins this bid is gonna be responsible for reimbursing us the money that we pay out to the consulting firm for the RFP.
That's true.
How do we even know that they're going to agree to that? I mean, we can't make anybody agree to that.
It, it, okay. So, so it's not a, an arm twisting process. It's a part of the process. And it has been something that has been done in several other cities. And I'll tell you this, we just came, I just walked in and we just came from the Arkansas Municipal League meeting. And aside from the fact that this has been a process that has been proven to work in other cities, without that being an issue or a conflict, it is, I can tell you that we, myself and/or Chief of Staff Joyce Campbell were approached by two companies who were there and expressed excitement to be able to submit a proposal and were familiar with this process. I also know that Waste Management were, they watched or their representation watched our meeting on Monday and were aware, I guess probably got a copy of the presentation. And I got a subsequent phone call with some questions and that wasn't one of the questions. That was never made an issue so far. In the four firms who have expressed that they intend to apply or to submit, rather, and had any questions or expressed a desire and excitement to submit. So I don't, I can tell you that's not an issue.
Okay, and then my last concern is that looking at the contract, reading over the contract, I see dates in there that precedes us approving this thing, dates that we haven't even agreed to the contract yet. We haven't signed a contract. We haven't passed a resolution. But there's dates in the resolution that precedes us actually signing an agreement. And I don't know how.
I can, I, well, I can tell you that that would be changed. I think first of all, the, the dates that you saw were the dates that were submitted for our consideration with the intent of putting the measure on the agenda, excuse me, and assuming that, you know, we would be able to get it passed, given the timeline and understanding that there would be a full presentation. And it's something we absolutely have to do. And it didn't. So whatever contract we sign obviously would necessitate that we augment those dates to reflect the beginning of the activity to occur after signing the, the contract.
Okay, thank you for answering everything's about me. I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you for your questions. Any other questions or concerns?
Yes, I'm with Dick May.
Councilmember, Councilmember Mays, please proceed.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. It's forty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. If we reimburse, reimburse if y'all select the bidding.
I'm, I'm sorry, say that again? What was, I didn't hear what you just said.
The page, line, it was saying something about the, the city will pay initial costs for services of thousands, but five thousand, six hundred dollars.
Right, so it lays out the, the three payments. It, it lays out the three payments that we would make. And if you'll recall, councilmember, when Mr. Wheatley was here, he was explaining what the role of SWS would be in helping us lay out our process, negotiate the proposal and the terms of the RFP. Excuse me, and our local selection committee would actually make the selection. Now, the cost for them helping us with this procurement process and the negotiations is what we would be paying the forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars for. But we would get reimbursed that money by who, whatever company won the bid. And as I mentioned earlier, in response to Councilmember Frazier's question about that, that so far has not been an issue in our process with regard to the sanitation companies that have expressed interest in submitting, neither from our current vendor, Waste Management, so, yeah.
I have two things. So is that a one side of favor?
Yes.
Personally, I kind of support Waste Management has done a lot better. I mean, to me, when I call them, they're, they're, they're doing the, they can't. And we're talking, we're talking about trash now, a lot of them. And like I said, when I call them, they respond. Now, I'm just saying, y'all can do what you want to do, but I think, I think we need to look at this a lot closer. We're just throwing this down at our, our citizens. They don't know what we're doing. I'm gonna stick with Waste Management, I'm saying personally, so, keep, go ahead.
Thank you, councilmember. And just to be clear, before I entertain a motion, this, what we're asking the council to do, and I do appreciate, I believe there were six council, five, five councilmembers who signed on to co-sponsor this measure. This is a, this is so that we can move forward in our process since the contract comes up for renewal at the end of October. And we have a local selection committee and they will actually make the decision, which could be that we move forward with the proposal that Waste Management submits. And I, I believe that they will submit. Or it could be another firm that submits a proposal that is in the best interest of the city of Pine Bluff. That is the, that is what we are aiming to do. And I can tell you that based on my conversations with the representatives of Waste Management, they understand that. And I think that they will adhere to whatever the terms are of a reasonable, professionally crafted and negotiated RFP among all of us and will have a fair process moving forward. With that said, I would be, I will entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to. I'm sorry, I will, I will entertain a motion to.
Attorney Scott, do you need, do you need to read it?
Oh, I guess we need to start with that.
So I will ask Attorney Scott to read the resolution in its entirety.
A resolution waiving competitive selection and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Solid Waste Specialist LLC. Whereas the contract with Waste, whereas the contract with Waste Management of Arkansas will expire on October 31st, 2025, the city of Pine Bluff wishes to solicit proposals from interested sanitation companies to perform this service for the city. And whereas Solid Waste Specialist LLC is a professional consulting firm which specializes in assisting municipalities with the procurement process for solid waste and other environmental services. And whereas SWS will prepare the request for proposals to be solicited by the city of Pine Bluff, evaluate responses to the RFPs, assist with any negotiations and make its recommendations. evaluate responses to the RFPs, assist with any negotiations and make its recommendations. And whereas the city will pay the initial cost for services to, of forty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, which will be reimbursed by the selected vendor within 30 days of being awarded the contract. And whereas, an aggressive schedule is necessary to vet potential vendors to prevent a delay or discontinuation of sanitation services before the franchise agreement with Waste Management expires. And whereas competitive selection should be waived to ensure the continuation of garbage collection services without interruption at a competitive rate. And whereas the Pine Bluff City Council believes it's in the best interest of the city of Pine Bluff to waive competitive bidding and enter into the attached agreement with Solid Waste Specialists LLC. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council finds that competitive selection for professional consulting services to assist the city of Pine Bluff with procurement process for solid waste would be impractical and inefficient and should be, and is therefore waived. Section 2, that the mayor is authorized to execute the attached agreement between Solid Waste Specialists LLC and the city of Pine Bluff for the consideration and all the terms and conditions set forth therein.
I see that Councilwoman Frazier has a question.
I, I wanted to make sure that we say where we, in this resolution, where we were going to be paying the funds that we're gonna initially pay, what line item is coming out from the budget.
I didn't say anything, I didn't say that.
You're asking?
It's not, it's not in there.
You know, we have that.
You can designate it, we'll just add it.
Anytime we disperse any funds, I'm sure they're gonna pay my funds. We have to have where it's coming from in the resolution. Now, I'm, I don't have it before me, so I just wanted to confirm.
No, I'm glad you brought that up. Do we have that in the?
We can amend, it's not in there, but we can amend it to include that. We can amend the legislation to include that.
So we.
Y'all, y'all moving along. You're breaking up.
So we can amend the measure to include that, which would come from the consulting line item in the mayor's, the executive budget.
And, and let me just say this so that that way I can give everything I need to do out of the way before we vote. I am going to have to abstain or say no to this for right now because I don't feel comfortable approving something that has old dates in the thing with the resolution and not an actual schedule of events that is from the time that we started to going into the contract. But, but I, again, I have no issues with George Wheatley. He is a fair person, he was then, and I'm sure he will be now. So then I just wanted to say that.
So, the, I think the first thing, first order of business is for me to accept a motion to amend the resolution to reflect that the budgeted dollars for the, in the executive budget for consulting will be where these funds come from.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend the resolution.
Second, second.
And that, that motion was made by Councilwoman Brunson and seconded by Councilmember Brown. Any discussion?
Brown and Frazier.
And, and, okay, so two people can second? Okay, so with no further discussion, all of those.
He has a question in reference to the amendment. Is that Councilmember Lockett?
Councilmember Lockett, did you have a question regarding the amendment? Okay, so hold on, so hold on. So let me finish with the amendment and then I'll entertain any discussion from there. All of those in agreement for the amendment to be added reflecting where the funds would come from in the executive budget on the consulting line item indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
So I heard ayes from Councilwoman Brunson, Lynette Frazier. I think I heard it from Councilmember Lockett. But I did not hear anything from Councilmember Mays.
Since it's on Zoom, let's go ahead and do a roll call. We go ahead and do that.
We'll go, since, since, since we're on Zoom, we're gonna go ahead and do a roll call, please. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Mays?
No.
Councilmember Holcomb? Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Lockett? Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier?
I'll say it.
Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
Councilmember Denton? Councilmember Denton? Councilmember Denton? Councilmember Fails?
Aye.
So one, two, three.
It's five.
Four, five.
Is that five?
The motion, the.
Was that five or four?
One, two, three, four.
Mayor needs to vote.
Frazier said aye.
Okay, Mays said no. Holcomb is not here. Brown said aye.
Lockett said aye.
Oh, okay.
The motion passes. Councilmember Lockett, believe you've had some further discussion.
For the record, the justification for the waiver of competitive.
He, he. Go ahead, can you hear? Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Barely, but we can hear you.
Yes, I just want to state for the, could you state for the record the reason for the competitive, the waiving of competitive?
Oh, yes, yes. So the, the reason for the waiver is really the time sensitivity in order for us to meet the timeline so that we not only complete the procurement process, but we also give whoever wins the bid time enough to prepare to begin the contract, what, no matter who it is. We, we need it to go ahead and do this now. And, and this is a pretty aggressive timeframe that has been set up to complete it, but it is, it's reasonable, but it is aggressive. And incorporating, you know, a, a bid process which would take at least.
Two, three weeks? How long?
It probably at least two weeks if not.
At least two weeks, if not three, would prevent us from being able to complete the competitive proposal, RFP process and allow enough time for the winning vendor to prepare to begin the new contract under the terms that would be included in the RFP. So that is the only reason. I have no doubt that SWS would not only compete, but be able to win in terms of a bid such as this, given the, the reasonable amount of the, what the consulting would entail. But also given the expertise that we would be engaging in Mr. George Wheatley as he had been previously a part of the negotiations and the contract extensions, competitive bidding, as he worked for Waste Management for several years. So he's pretty intimately aware of the needs of this city and the, has the historical knowledge of our past contracts as well as just a general knowledge and expertise around sanitation, contracts, procurement, et cetera. So, you know, for those three reasons, I, I would say is why we are asking for the waiver. Any further questions or concerns?
I have one more question. Is, I guess it's for Althea. Is there a way that we can put language in the resolution stating that the contract will be corrected with the new dates or something? I, I don't know what the language should read. But I, I don't want to say no to this, but I can't say yes to it with that attached to it, with those dates that precede this, that.
I, 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 if, I know you're asking that of the city attorney. What I would say, though, I'd like to interject and say that I would not sign anything that was not corrected as it relates to dates. I mean, nothing is gonna get through our own process if the dates are not correct.
I know, but we, we have a resolution on the table with a, a, a.
But the resolution on the table has an example of a contract. Nothing has been signed. And so we would not sign anything with incorrect dates on it. Just like we would not sign anything with incorrect names or any Scrivener's errors. And I, I mean, I don't, I don't want to start, you know, a process where we're trying to amend resolutions for something that is required of us right now. Yeah.
Yes, we have amended resolutions from the floor previously.
I mean, we just did. I'm just saying that I don't think we need to do an amendment for something that is required of us as, in terms of doing business. We're not gonna sign anything incorrect knowingly. And we're having this conversation. And I'm not trying to be contrary. I just don't want to start a precedent where we are in conversation, we are aware of something that needs to be done. And just as a matter of doing business, you know, we.
Again, this is something that if, if, I mean.
Well, Councilwoman Frazier, do you want to make the amendment? I'd be happy to entertain it.
You said, this is just a sample.
It is a sample.
That's what I was asking, Althea, I don't know how she stated. She is the legal counsel, so I want to.
I think that you could just put, right after it says, attached agreement with any up, necessary updates, something like that, to reflect that.
Because I really don't want to say no, but I, I just would have to say no at that.
So is that your, is that your amendment?
Yes.
Any second?
And the updates will be submitted with the resolution.
I'll second them.
It's, it's, the motion has been made to amend the language in the resolution to recognize and make any appropriate updates to the contract.
Yes.
It was seconded by Councilwoman Brunson without any further, any further discussion on the amendment. With no further discussion, the motion has been made and seconded. All those in agreement with the amendment indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, that, that will require a roll call.
Councilmember Mays?
No.
Councilmember Holcomb? Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett? Councilmember Frazier?
He just said aye. Did you hear?
Councilmember Frazier?
Aye, can you hear me?
Yes.
Aye.
Uh huh. Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
Councilmember Denton?
Can you hear me?
I can now.
Okay, aye.
And Councilmember Fails?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, and we have a resolution on the table that has been twice amended to reflect where the funds will come from as well as to ensure that any appropriate updates will be made to the contract. I will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution as amended.
I make a motion to.
I vote that we adopt the resolution as amended. This is Lynette Frazier.
Second, Glenn Brown Jr.
It's been, the motion has been made and seconded that the resolution waiving competitive bidding for, to engage SWS in a contract assisting the city of Pine Bluff with procurement has, uh huh, has been, it's been made and, the motion has been made and seconded for what I just described. As amended, all of those who are, who wish to vote yes or will answer Madam Clerk as she calls the roll.
Councilmember Mays?
No.
Councilmember Holcomb? Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier? Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
Councilmember Denton?
Aye.
Councilmember Fails?
Aye.
And the motion has been adopted, the resolution has been adopted. Thank you, council. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, can I request that once the changes have been made to that contract, that it's emailed to us, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. A motion to adjourn the first special call meeting.
The motion has been made to adjourn the first special call meeting. Any seconds?
Second.
Second.
Denton.
Councilmember Denton has seconded. It's been a motion and seconded. Any discussion? Without discussion, all of those voting for adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? We adjourn. And now we will call the second special call meeting to order.
Madam, Mayor, I think we can forego the formality.
And since we have already done the invocation and recited the Pledge of Allegiance, there have been no residents who have called to speak on any of this agenda item. So we will ask the city attorney to read the resolution on the agenda.
Resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing an agreement with Forbes LLP for auditing services. Whereas the city has for many years utilized BKDLLP for professional auditing services. And whereas BKDLLP is now part of Forbes LLP and the city desires to utilize the new firm to continue audit services based on the familiarity and experience with the city of the former BKD auditors who are now part of, of Forbes. And whereas competitive bidding for these services cannot, sorry, competitive bidding for these services cannot secure comparable familiarity and expertise at an equal or better price. Engaging in a competitive bidding would be inefficient and impractical. And whereas the Arkansas Code, Section 1458 303 B2B, permits a municipality by resolution to waive competitive bidding when doing so would not be feasible or practical. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council finds that in light of the foregoing competitive bidding to secure auditing services for the city would be impractical and not feasible. Section 2, the mayor is authorized to execute a contract with Forbes LLP for professional auditing services for the city in substantial conformity with the attached document consisting of 11 pages and for the consideration and upon the terms and conditions set there, set therein, set therein, Section 3, this resolution takes effect immediately upon adoption.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Oh, before, I'm sorry, before we do that, we need to go ahead and call the. Oh, before, I'm sorry, before we do that, we need to go ahead and call the roll for this meeting. I apologize that I didn't request that prior to the reading of the resolution. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Mays? Councilmember Holcomb? Councilmember Holcomb? Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Lockett?
Here.
Councilmember Frazier?
Here.
Councilmember Brunson?
Here.
Councilmember Denton?
Here.
Councilmember Fails?
Yeah.
Seven present.
Seven present.
One, sorry? Seven present, one.
Yes, and one absence. Okay, and I will entertain a motion to adopt this, the resolution?
Who to adopt?
Second. Councilmember Brown made the motion to adopt. Councilmember Brunson seconded. Any discussion? With no discussion, I will, I'll ask, oh, I will ask Madam Clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb? Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett? Councilmember Frazier? Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
Councilmember Denton? Councilmember Denton? Councilmember Denton?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, aye.
Councilmember Fails?
Aye.
And the motion passes. The resolution is adopted. With no further business or discussion, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
I approve that we adjourn.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those who wish to adjourn indicate by saying aye, and we'll assume that that is unanimous. Thank you, all members, so much. Have a great weekend. Oh, see you at Juneteenth.
You're welcome. I'm on the road, so I won't see y'all, but I'll see y'all next week.
See you then.
Be safe, be safe.